Well, it's five thirty, Gary.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, October twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one. We'll call the meeting to order, approve the agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor, council, have any additions or corrections for you tonight?
I'll both to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Dave to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Right, invocation. We do not have a pastor present, so we'll just have a moment of silence, please. Next is pledges with allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to flag, I live in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? Great, we have a couple resolutions underneath there. We have resolution number one-five-three-six-six. Resolution accepting cash donations for the Hutchinson Police Department future equipment purchases. And we have resolution number one-five-three-six-eight. Resolution accepting cash donations from Assam Valley Lodge number one-oh-nine for the flagpole setup at the senior center.
Motion to approve one-five-three-six-six and one-five-three-six-eight.
I'll second that.
Motion by Pat, second by Dave to accept both resolutions. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Public comment. Anybody wants to address the council, please come forward. State your name and address. All ready. We have approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of October twelfth, two thousand twenty-one.
Make a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve the minutes from October twelfth, two thousand twenty-one. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Consent agenda. This will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. B is appointment of power when linked to the price board to August of two thousand twenty-four. B is approval of workforce sharing agreement between the city of Hutchinson and Hutchinsonhausen and redevelopment authority. C is approval of purchase of wheel loader for Creek Side. D is approval of professional service agreement with K L M Engineering Incorporated for repair and cleaning of the city water towers. E is approval of resolution number one-five-three-six-seven. Resolution for certification of special assessment from the city of Hutchinson to the McLeod County Auditor. And F is claims appreciation and contract payments. Is there anything anybody wants pulled off?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. We have no, oh, carrying, but we're moving right along, man.
Yeah, I'm not slowing you down, but uh.
Don't let say anything out here.
So.
We have the Hutchinson Center for the Arts annual update. Please, good evening.
Um, my name is Jill Springer. I'm the president of the Center for the Arts Council. We've got Molly, our new director here. Um, she joined us, what, maybe a month, six weeks ago, and she's doing a great job. Kay from our board is also here. We just wanted to let you know what the Center for the Arts has been up to and how we've been using our funds, including some funds from the city. Is it easier?
Yeah. Do I just tell you to click or?
You get to.
Jill, you gotta do some work here, you know?
So I think one of the main things that the Center for the Arts does is we're a hub for other arts organizations in Hutchinson. Um, and those organizations, along with us, bring in a lot of revenue to Hutchinson. So I'm gonna list off who all our partner organizations are and how we serve them. Chrome River Area Youth Orchestra, Crow River Stairs, Historic Hutchinson, Hutchinson Parks Rec and Community Ed, Hutchinson Photography Club, Hutchinson Theater Company, Litchfield Area Men's Chorus, Minnesota Pottery Festival, No Lines Improv Troop, and Riverside Music Festival. So no doubt we've all heard of at least one of those. And what we are able to provide for them is quite a variety of things. One, um, we're a fiscal agent and sponsor for their grants and fundraising, right? So pretty big deal. Full insurance coverage and a pretty reasonable, um, like, annual fee. Brick and mortar benefits like address for mail, meeting space, secure storage and event space. Administrative resources like online and in-person ticket sales. We answer calls and provide referrals for the organization, receive online donations. Marketing and PR, so social media promotion from our page, information about upcoming events in our newsletter, and association of the HCA as a hub for the arts. So you can see, enter. We also provide visual arts exhibition series to the community. So a way for the public to come in and view artists from around Minnesota on a variety of their own personal paths. So new artists, established artists, and we actually bring a fair amount of people in from out of town, uh, come into town to see the arts exhibits. Uh, very well-known artists come right over to our Center for the Arts. You can see some of their names listed, um. So I think sometimes people think of the arts as just theater, uh, but really visual arts is a big part of what we've brought. And then the two most well-attended and popular exhibits we do, the We Are What We Make. And so those are people in the Hutchinson and surrounding areas that do art. So everything from paintings to, uh, you know, crochet things, whatever, um, can bring their things and then bring their friends and show them what they've made. And then the youth art exhibit, um, where teachers from the surrounding schools will submit their students' artwork. And then parents can come and look. And I know my son was in there one year and he thought it was the coolest thing in the world. And his little first grade painting was up in the Center for the Arts. He felt like a pretty big deal. So those are two really well-attended events at the Center for the Arts. We also do a lot of youth education. We have classes for kids, um, in all age ranges in the summer, um, MEA. And we have a lot of scholarships available. They're not as widely utilized as I think they could be. And I think that that's something that we could really work on. Ten percent of our participants benefit from the scholarship program. But we even have tokens for the Trailblazer Transit, so that if they can't get to the class, uh, we can get them there and we can give them a token for their parents too, right? So if you don't wanna send your eight-year-old on Trailblazer by themselves, we'll get the parent to come along too. Uh, so really great courses. And then new into, uh, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, free take-home art kits. And these were really popular and gaining popularity. You just stop by, you pick up a bag. It's got everything you need inside of it to make art at home. And now we're partnering with the Hutchinson Public Library and the program just keeps growing and growing. It seems like every few months, they're asking us for more art kits every month. Cause the kids are just loving to pick those up and take them home. We also do adult education, so there's courses for people who are interested in making art. Um, and in the past, pre-COVID, of course, the Center for the Arts came into Woodstone and did what's called the Creative Palette Program. And, uh, they came in four times and made art with, I happen to be the executive director of Woodstone, so I was highly involved in this program as well. And they made art projects with our residents and maybe the most popular one was, um, the pottery that they made. And then it was taken, it was fired, it came back. And they were so proud of what they had made. It was the coolest experience, um, and really, really enriching the lives of the residents. Um, finally, I think what does everything always kinda come down to is, is money, right? And when we get money from our, um, we get a lot of grants, uh, from like the Southwest Arts Council and the McKnight Foundation and just donations and the city. And I think it's important to note how much revenue it brings in, um, so you can take a look at the numbers. So a study done three or four years ago showed that the economic impact of arts and culture organization and audiences in Hutchinson was two point two million dollars. So your dollars, when you support the Center for the Arts, are very well spent. We are very diligent as a board about how we spend our money. We're cutting, um, you know, organizational costs whenever we can and just really working hard to find grants and other monies to really continue to enrich our community with arts. So thank you for your support, uh, very, very much. We all really, really appreciate it. We know it's not something that can ever just be assumed. We know we have a lot of people asking for money and we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Before you sit down.
Yes.
Why don't you bring up our new Center for the Arts director?
Yeah, she can introduce herself and maybe tell us a little bit about her.
Yeah. Hi, so my name's Molly Rivera, and like Jill said, I started a couple, what, a couple weeks ago, a month now. Um, I'm originally from Hastings, Minnesota, so I'm a Minnesota native. And I went to school up in Duluth, Minnesota. I got my Bachelor of Fine Arts up there. And then I moved all the way out to Missoula, Montana and lived there for a couple of years, where I got my master's degree in fine arts. And my husband is a potter over at Clay Coyote. And so that's kinda how we found Hutchinson. And I had never heard of Hutchinson before moving here and I have. And I just continue to be blown away by the community here, both the arts community and otherwise. And it's very welcoming, um, and I'm really excited to be a part of it and get to know more of you and work with you further. So thank you so much for your support. It's a lot.
Welcome, nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any aoust, Jill?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Uh, review of the City of Hutchinson, America's Water Infrastructure Act of two thousand eighteen Risk and Resiliency Assessment Report. Kent, is this you?
Yes, this would be me. Uh, yeah, I had a handout in front of you, a quick memorandum. Uh, that was attached though. And like you said, Mayor, uh, we have recently completed a report. Very wordy one at that, but, uh, yeah, basically it's a report. It's an analysis of our, our water infrastructure. And, uh, it's risk and resilience, it's tolerance to risk and, you know, a long-term resilience, uh, to potential, uh, attacks per se. And this is being required by a federal law, uh, of basically all municipal water services across the country. And that law was implemented back in, in twenty eighteen, as it mentions, uh, in the verbiage of law. Uh, we recently completed it, oh, a few months ago, uh, and it went very well. And, uh, we had the assistance of a consultant, uh, Arcadis, uh, their, their water infrastructure consultant, uh, national consultant that specializes in this type of work. Uh, I believe the consulting fee was about eighteen thousand dollars, so it was well worth the effort in the end. Uh, you know, we were kinda questionable of what this was and what was being required of, uh, you know, the water utility and the city itself to complete this exercise. But in the end, we, like I mentioned, I mentioned in the memorandum, uh, we, we arrived at a very good report. Uh, commend the city staff for the effort they put into this. A lot of this was, uh, data collection and then, uh, analysis done by staff, uh, in conjunction with the consultant guiding them through the required analysis. And, uh, yeah, like I mentioned in the memorandum, it is somewhat a very delicate document. Um, it's, uh, there's not a lot to be had in there, but, uh, you know, we don't wanna have it too public to give anybody any wise ideas is what it boils down to. And, yeah, not that anybody would, you know, arrive at something, you know, that wasn't, uh, that's top secret per se. But, uh, you know, the obvious concerns and, uh, you know, liabilities and potential risks are, are pointed out in the documents such as a variety of contamination, you know, issues and, and targets that could be arrived at, both at the water plant and on the distribution system. Uh, you know, we do have some large water mains on our system. Uh, in particular going out of our water plant, you know, that if they were compromised, you know, that would be very bad news from an infrastructure standpoint. And then there's things like tornadoes and fires and things of that nature at the water plant that were also analyzed and what the potential, uh, replacement costs and repair costs of different types of events, what that would entail. And, you know, it ranges from potential risks of, you know, a few thousand dollars to, you know, if you had a widespread contamination and potential liabilities of what the, including deaths and things of that nature would be into the, the billions of dollars, so. Yeah, it wa- it was worthwhile and very interesting in the end. And we commend, or I commend staff and the consultants involved. Now, like I mentioned in the, in the memo, the, the report appendices really spell out, you know, the process, you know, those seven appendices, eight, oh, seven, excuse me, you know, as they work through the threats, the risks, the potential liabilities, you know, the co- risk calculation, basically a cost analysis and then. In the end, we were given a very good menu of risk mitigation measures, uh, that the city can pursue in our emergency response plan as we revise that going forward.
Yeah, Mayor, council, this is basically a security report. That's why it's obviously not presented here at the, the public, um, forum. But it was ideal there. Essentially, it was to ensure that our water infrastructure, water infrastructure is safe and secure.
Do we have to do this each year, Kent?
Does it have to be done each year?
No. This, it was basically a federal law that was. They revised a federal law that was implemented in two thousand two. Basically in response to recent, yeah, I can't use the word, but, you know, there's bad actors out there, terrorists per se, you know, that could compromise, you know, water distribution and treatment systems. And, you know, one of the big things in, you know, not that it's a huge concern, but we've been talking about it quite a bit here is our SCADA system, our control system on both the water and wastewater side of things. And really up, upgrading that system goes a long ways in protecting, you know, the viability and functionality of both our water plant and our, our wastewater plant. So, no, uh, we don't envision doing this for another twenty years, hopefully. So with that, yeah, this was just a review. Don't necessarily have to approve the document. Uh, the document remains on file at the water plant. And, uh, all we had to do is just assure, uh, the Minnesota Department of Health that, uh, we completed this, this exercise, which we have. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Uh, we'll move on to unfinished business. Uh, second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty-one dash eight-two-six. And ordinance authorizing sale of municipal owned land to MGE Properties LLP.
Mayor and council, uh, as noted, this is the second reading, um, with the request of adoption of the ordinance. Uh, I think as we noted at the last council meeting, we had been in negotiations with, uh, the property owner, um, at one oh seven First Avenue Southwest, which is New Era Financial Group, um, about their desire to, to purchase the, the bear or the parking lot that's to the west of their property. Um, and so we, uh, were able to agree upon a purchase price of sixteen thousand three hundred and seventy-eight dollars, um, along with a purchase agreement. Um, nothing has changed since the, the first reading of the ordinance. And so staff is asking that the council consider a second reading and an adoption of that ordinance. The ordinance is required by our, our city charter anytime we look to sell, uh, city-owned land.
I make a motion to approve the second reading?
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve the second reading. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Moving on to new business, uh, setting budget workshop for November ninth, two thousand twenty-one at four P M. Uh, enterprise funds.
Yeah, Mayor, council, this is just one of our normal steps in the budget process of reviewing the enterprise funds. I'd make a motion to set that meeting.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to set the budget workshop meeting for November ninth at four P M. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Uh, governance. We have the tall grass noxious weed monthly report for July and August of two thousand twenty-one. The Sustainability Advisory Board minutes from September twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. The Hutchinsonhausen Redevelopment Authority Board minutes from September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one. The City of Hutchinson Financial Report and Investment Report for September of two thousand twenty-one. And a quarterly Public Arts Commission Financial Update. Uh, Chief Gifferson, do you have anything for us tonight? All righty, Kent.
Yes, so a couple of things. Uh, first and foremost, uh, this day, a week ago, uh, the legislative, uh, legislator bonding tour on the house side of the state government was obtaining a visit at, out at our HAZ facility. Uh, the, the county, uh, along with the state and the city, was leading an effort to, uh, secure appropriation for, for upgrades to the fuel system and to the mechanic space at the HAZ facility. So first and foremost, they were out there to tour that facility and hear about that request. Uh, the legislators that sit on the, the Bonding Capitol Committee, I should say, were on basically a lot of them. We're riding on a bus and they go travel around the state for, for a few days. And, uh, so they were hosted at the HAZ facility. We were also able to touch on, uh, the lake's restoration bonding request. We have our second bonding request in with Representative Erdel. And then also the Civil Air Patrol. The city is acting as the lead agency for requests on that front also. So went very well. Uh, yeah, there were, I would say fifteen legislators there, uh, lots of questions. Uh, I would say Representative Erdel continues to be very interested in our lake's restoration efforts. Uh, so he's, uh, keeps encouraging us to pursue that. Uh, yeah, and I don't, council, is there any questions on that?
Maybe you want to, just for anybody who knew or was not familiar with what the HAZ facility is, if you wanted to share a little about the.
Yeah, the, the HAZ facility south on Adams is the Hutchinson Area Transportation Services Building. Uh, was constructed over twenty years ago. Forget the exact date, but, uh, mid to late nineties. And, uh, it, it started out, out as a s- a smaller facility that basically housed, you know, obviously city streets department, but then housed, you know, some county maintenance functions, not a whole lot at the beginning. And then, uh, the state had their, MidDoc had some maintenance and trucks there along with some engineering staff. Uh, it's really evolved on the county side of things. They've done an expansion oh, eight years or so ago to host their en- engineering group. And also they've expanded their, their maintenance capabilities out of that garage. Uh, the state has stayed relatively stable with their functions, both on the maintenance side of things and the engineering side. But, you know, as equipment needs grow and the, the big thing that's really grown there is the, the me- me- mechanical space that's required, uh, out there this day and age. And really, it's, uh, I think a testament of primarily the county and the city taking on more mechanical responsibilities with their own equipment and trying to do more and more things in the house, obviously. Mechanic services aren't getting any cheaper, you know, whether you own a car or a, uh, you know, a snowplow per se. So, uh, this is really addressing that need and that's also addressing the location of the fueling system, which the current location with the additions of the cold storage buildings to the, uh, south has become somewhat problematic. If you're familiar with where that sits, you can just look, you know, to the right or if you're southbound on Adams, to the right, to the south side of the original building. And the fueling station sits out not too far from the original building, which has really turned into a main travelway now, uh, for the functionality of the whole site. So it's, it's moving that station to the north side of the building, uh, along with a wash station and a dump station. And, uh, hopefully a compressed natural gas station in the future. So, yeah, it's really a worthwhile project. It comes to a total cost of about seven million dollars. Uh, the bonding allocation being requested by the county is four point four million dollars. And the estate is pursuing about two million on their front through their capital bonding efforts for their facilities, which is a, a different pot of money to the state.
I think it's really a good example, three different government agencies working together to have a, to share costs and, you know, facility that changes.
Well, that's nice for a change.
Yeah, and actually this day and age, people get along, uh, pretty well together out there. Historically, it hasn't always been the case, so. Uh, otherwise, yeah, like I said, that's, we'll see what happens with the estate. Legislative session, I guess, who knows what's gonna, how that's gonna play out. But, uh, you know, we weren't, we weren't that confident, uh, the last go-around with the, the bonding efforts with respect to the lake's restoration project. Then at the eleventh hour, uh, Representative Erdel got him included and we weren't on any of the lists, you know, throughout the entire regular session. So it wasn't until that, uh, you know, that, uh, special session last fall or two falls ago that, uh, we were fortunate enough to be included. Other ones, yeah, a couple of handouts, uh, touching base on the HOCS system. I know there's been a few questions out there. We, we've come to a point, obviously, where, uh, the rework on the concrete front isn't gonna be able to be accomplished this year. Uh, so we've worked out an arrangement with a contractor, uh, to have that work addressed, hopefully as early as possible next spring. Uh, in the meantime, we are, we're working to get it straight. Hopefully that'll happen at the end of the week here. So once they get the pavement markings down, uh, the traffic control has already been removed. Uh, MidDoc has, uh, given us the authority to activate the system. So apparently it's, it's good enough to be utilized in the meantime, but not good enough for the long term. But, uh, it is what it is and, uh, we'll address the rework, uh, with the contractor to hopefully satisfy the state next spring.
People just have to be careful with that eighth of an inch. People have to be careful out there with the eighth of an inch that I thought was spec.
Yeah, yeah. It's a little steep on the, uh, southwest corner. Yeah, crossing is what I'm a little sensitive. And that's mine, so.
Sure.
We'll leave it at that.
Yep.
Yeah, this is, uh, what's been. Yeah, this is uh what's been posted online, this this handout and uh. You know, I won't say a lot here, just wanted to give this to council to give you a heads up uh once it's activated. Uh we obviously stole this, this is uh uh or borrowed it, I guess.
Borrowed it, sounds better.
We borrowed it from many other agencies that have used it across the country and tweaked it accordingly. Uh the big thing to note is on the back, and I just want to make note of this. Uh it's on the the left, lower left side in that bottom paragraph, really uh. You know, however, drivers are still responsible for stopping for pedestrians even if the HOCS system is not activated. So just want to stress that, you know, if there's, if somebody thinks they hit the button and dance or, you know, and starts to cross. Or the system malfunctions for whatever reason, uh which can happen during, especially during the winter months. For for signal systems, uh you know, drivers still have to stop. When somebody initiates a crossing at an intersection, even if there is a signal in play, so. Just want to stress that, otherwise, it's uh, yeah, it's pretty, pretty self explanatory. I don't counsel us any questions, like I said, this has been posted on the city's website, it's been uh provided to the press. It's uh been linked to on the Facebook page, so. With that, uh we're gonna hopefully get this thing activated by the end of the week, if not early next week. Other handout in front of you, just as a heads up also, uh we'll be sending this out on the water and wastewater utility rates front. Uh it's a fairly detailed handout that provides some backgrounds with respect to our recent. Uh utility rate study for water and wastewater rates. And then uh we try to boil it down into as simple as terms as possible to. You know, tell how rates are going to be changing and. And then on the end of it, we we touch on irrigation meters, D deck meters, whatever you may call them. And uh how those come into play and then. Yeah, we want to stress, you know, if people have questions, please call us. Uh we're gonna be in contact with people this even more on this front as we begin to uh ramp up. To implement these rates in in two thousand twenty three, so this is just the first step to get some information out to people. Get them thinking about this. Ultimately, we're we're hoping to get a calculator on the city's website that actually allows somebody to enter their. You know, type of use residential per se, X gallons a month, even even enter in a uh. You know, a a theoretical irrigation amount and be able to kick out a monthly rate, so. That's being worked on as we speak, but this is the first step. We're also going to be meeting with the industries again, uh to talk about rate increases or changes, I should say. And what that means to them and then also in the next few months, probably. Early, we'll try to initiate them by the holidays, but the meetings more than likely won't occur until after the holidays is. Meeting with our multi-unit apartment owners. And uh explaining to them what these changes will mean to them. More to come on this front, I think we're we're doing pretty well. And lastly. Yeah, we're in quite the interesting construction season between this HOCS system and then. Driveways to the west of the rec center, so uh. Yeah, there, and you may hear about this, this is why I wanted to mention it, but uh there are some pop out. Uh issues that are occurring uh rather early. Since the uh concrete on these driveways hasn't gone through a freeze thaw cycle, so. This is concerning, we are meeting with the contractor. Uh beginning the conversation of what this is going to mean relative to the project and and withholding funds. In the meantime, and not being able to find all of the projects, so, yeah, there's some unhappy contractors involved. Uh there's been some unhappy citizens that the, you know, people. That have paid assessments on this project, you know, that aren't happy with the project nor is city staff and it's. It's especially concerning that it's, like I said, it's happening before that concrete's even gone through a winter, so. Uh that doesn't necessarily mean it's as simple as, you know, just some susceptible aggregate that's. Gone through a freeze thaw cycle and you have a few pop outs, that's to be expected with concrete and that happens. Uh this uh, this is concerning, so. You might be hearing from some citizens out there and obviously we've already had quite the uh. Quite the episode with these driveways already.
How many, how many driveways is it affecting?
Yeah, it's about half of them right now, so.
Oh my.
My fears, our fears, it's.
Gonna be all of them.
Yeah, it's not gonna get any better through the winter months and come next spring, yeah.
Especially you go through that cycle of freezing and thawing.
Yeah, it's, it's not good and.
Something wrong with the, must have been something wrong with the concrete, huh?
Yeah, and there, there's can be some reactions and that happen between the the sand. Especially the sand and the cement mixtures and uh it it doesn't happen all the time. But uh when it does, it can be real bad news and then it's uh, you know, we didn't. This is for certain, we didn't pay for this to happen and then. You get into a a debate with the contractor, you know, who takes on this risk and uh, yeah. We will proceed accordingly in the spring, like I said, we're gonna, we're gonna hold the uh the full five percent retainage until then. And uh see where we're at next spring.
No, I'll just note, and this is probably more for. From a policy standpoint and from a staff standpoint, you know, that's why we have retainage built in the contracts. You may recall, might have been two or three years ago, and contractors were trying to get that retainage out of. I think they were trying to have laws passed where cities couldn't hold that retainage. Um and so that's one of the things that we've obviously fought for um at the legislature. And one of the reasons that we do it is for cases like this that may happen, so.
So have they been paid ninety five percent or?
Yep, they've been basically paid ninety five percent and we're in the process of finalizing the job with them. It would, it would still fall under the the warranty period, although that gets a little more. Problematic because now you're potentially dealing with the uh contractor's bonding company. So it's actually fortunate that it it became noticeable at this point, so we won't close the contract. You know, they're not liking this, but uh like Matt, like Matt mentioned, there's a lot at play, it it was passed with respect to retainage. The unfortunate thing, five percent of this project doesn't get us to the full removal and replacement cost of these driveways. But it's really the only teeth we have at this point. And ultimately, if the issue becomes bad enough, uh we can go towards their bonding company if need be. Thank you.
That's it. I seen that Chief Schuman came in, uh Chief, you wanna, you wanna come up here for for a minute here?
I don't know anything about this, so.
Last night I was fortunate enough to get invited to the fire station, uh Chief Schuman had uh three firefighters retire last night. Or shortly um before, so you wanna just uh tell the audience uh the three firemen and the years they've had serving?
Yes, I can do that. Um so yes, we had three that retired, uh and we knew those retirements were coming more than a year ago, so the last time we did a hiring, we hired. A little heavy knowing that we had retirements coming, um but the ones, individuals last night were um Lieutenant Tim Peterson, he had twenty-three years. Of service, uh Dan Sargent retired as a firefighter with twenty years and Lael Naibaki. As a firefighter with fifteen years of service, so. And then we also, because Lieutenant Tim Peterson was retiring in an officer position. We um had interviewed and then moved one of our firefighters, Eric Anselman, up to the rank of lieutenant. That was celebrated last night as well.
Then I don't have to mention it.
Deserves an applause from all of us today.
The nice thing was, I was telling my wife last night when I got home, she was asking how it went and I said at the end, I said, I've, we've always done this for retirements. Giving them the opportunity to speak, usually, you know, they all say, no, I don't want to talk, all three of them got up and had a nice little. Sentence or two uh from the heart, so it was, it was good. Right here?
Yes, it was.
I'm sorry, nightmare.
Fifty-eight years of in experience out the door, man, it's uh, it's hard to replace uh. You know, guys with that kind of knowledge. But uh it always seems like everybody steps up when you you lose some guys and everybody steps up, so.
Yes, I agree.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Alrighty, uh Mister Sabora, you have it. Okay, Dave, let's start with you tonight.
Well, you're fortunate I don't have anything.
Mister May.
Uh, don't get too elongated, I got uh. I was in a different community today and telling them about raking my leaves last night and they're getting picked up on Wednesday and with this wind, they'd all be spread out. And they're like, what do you mean raking your leaves? And I said, well, the city comes by and provides a service, like, I've never heard, I mean, they've done this coolest thing since sliced bread, so. It is really nice to have that, so.
You tell them up here and they get that.
I'm glad the city has that.
Chase, now, can you go back to the guys that were complaining about the traffic control on seven and twenty-two that? You took care of that, you 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 gotta take credit for that.
Back, I'll reinforce them tomorrow then.
Mary, thanks, Pat, Chad.
Sure, a couple of things, um so Kent, I asked a while ago about um. A marked crosswalk on Fifth on Main Street, uh did you ever hear back from MINDOT and that or?
No, yeah, it's in their. I guess queue.
On the radar.
End up on our to-do list when they finally blessed it.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, MINDOT's been a moving target, I, yeah, on a few fronts and it's just due to staff dynamics and the pandemic and. Uh then not being in the office and such, but uh, yeah. We'll get the blessing over the winter and then we'll end up strapping it next spring.
Okay, that's perfect. Sounds good, um I had an interesting uh conversation with a young lady named Josie Myers, she's from Hutchinson. Um she's a grad student in um the geography and cartography at Kent State in Ohio. And she put together a beautiful map of our park system and she painted it with water color and did it all like. Um outlining all the parks and trails and um I asked her if we could use it for anything or if she wanted me to present it to the parks. Board and she said we could and Lynn saw and it's it's an incredible piece, you know, so.
Haven't seen it yet.
Um yeah, I'll have to send it to the council, but um Josie, um she used to babysit my boys, so that's why I know her, but. Um but yeah, she's studying cartography and she also said with her classes she's been going through, she thought that. Um a lot of things we offer here in Hutchinson were just the way it was and she learned through studying other communities that it's not. And that Hutchinson's very proactive and things like creekside and just the way we take care of things here in town, she just assumed that that's the way it was. And she has found that it is not just the way it is and um she was pleasantly surprised and proud of her community, so that was nice to hear.
Well, Chad, you told me that Pittsburgh streets don't compare to Hutchinson's.
Yes, I was gonna get to that, so. So that was nice to hear from somebody that was studying other communities and then I went to visit some family in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania this weekend over M E A. And I just wanted to say that our pavement management um system is much more successful than the one in Pittsburgh. Um I was shocked at how crappy the pavement was across the board. And I was also, if people want to complain about the narrow streets that we're putting in here, um they should drive through downtown Pittsburgh. And see what happens, cause they'll have two lanes of parking and two lanes of traffic, but there's not room for four cars across the road. So it's really exciting down there and people are very aggressive in their communication down there when you meet them. And you're.
So you gotta hi- said hi to a few times?
Well, I didn't do the driving, my my cousin's husband was driving, but I I was a little bit uneasy the entire time we were there, but. Um I was just shocked at how narrow some of the old streets, you know, it's obviously a very old community and um. Uh he, my cousin's husband knows that I'm on in city government, so he asked if this kind of pavement would fly in Hutchinson. And the road that we were on at that point would have been the worst road in Hutchinson by about seventy percent, you know, so. It uh was nice to see that we're.
And that was a good one?
Well, there, it was all, it was all garbage, I got shocked and like, they they don't put a lot of, but like, we were, we were in kind of a. A suburb, like a nicer suburb, but there's no like walkability at all, you know, like um no like safe routes to schools and stuff, you know, so it was. Nice to see around here where you can bike and walk where you want to instead of walking down the road and almost getting hit a bunch of times, but. Uh it was just nice to see our infrastructure is nicer than Pittsburgh's, so.
They do have a couple more people than much.
They do, but even to compare to like Minneapolis or like bigger cities that we've been to, like, it was, it was really, really rough, but. Um but that's okay, so that's all I had.
So I take it you're not gonna move?
I would like to live a lot of places other than Pittsburgh. I think I'll just stay here for now.
Sounds good, anything else, Chad?
No, that's all I had.
Mary, Mary.
Um I don't have anything except to say that it's Halloween this Sunday, so. Beware, I mean, the little kids are out, if you're out and about, make sure your kids, you're with your children. Secondly, make sure that they have a costume that you can have maybe have some reflective. Stuff on it, keep your kids safe, but enjoy the spirit of the season, that's it.
Got your costume already?
Long time ago. I was testing my broom today with the wind velocity.
I will note Councilman uh Christensen gives out a nice array of candies, so if you're looking to hit it up, we we hit her up every year and it's a nice spread over there, so.
Absolutely.
And I would like to add something to that about the reflective stuff, uh. I go to work relatively early in the mornings and it's dark and uh I have seen several children riding bikes. They're usually on the sidewalks, but boy, you don't see them until you're right on them and uh it's really bad that they're. Not being more concerned about lights on the bikes or reflectors or whatever the case may be, so. Uh I think it's been about three or four this week so far that I've seen uh between six thirty and quarter to seven and uh. I don't like it when people are, uh you can't see them, uh it's just too. You don't know when they're gonna dump a bike uh along the street or whatever it might be, but it's it's dangerous, so. That's a good word of caution, Mary, uh to wear reflective uh gear of some sort or another, or get it on the bike so you can see them and uh. I, this morning, saw one lady was walking and she was wearing a reflective jacket, but she was also carrying a flashlight. Yeah, flashlight out in front of her, so just a safety thing for certain. Wouldn't want to see anybody get hurt.
Yeah, I like it when they wear a light on their, they have a cap or they have a light band on. And they're walking or they're riding their bike, you see them right away.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Well, it's dark, it's dark earlier, early, you know, it's dark in the morning and dark by five o'clock now, five thirty, so.
Thanks for being.
Summer's gone.
Thanks, Mary. Matt?
Um just two quick things, uh this Thursday is the historic tour that we're doing for behalf of staff, so. Ten A M and one P M, I think Dave and, or Pat and Chad are in the morning and. Dave and Mary signed up for the afternoon, so and then um another quick reminder, November fourth, which is a week from Thursday. Is the city's annual recognition event at the event center, so that's it for me.
Thanks, Matt. And uh since Chief Schuman was gracious enough to take my thunder away. I know I asked. So, yeah, this uh Halloween's coming up, be safe out there. Farmers are wrapping up, but there's still uh equipment on the road, so be safe when you're out and about. So uh with that, uh we can uh go into closed session, huh? Uh next item on the agenda is closed session to develop or consider an offer for purchase. The real estate property identified as one forty-five Second Avenue Southeast and two oh five Jefferson Street Southeast. I would not obtain a motion to go into closed session to discuss possible. Uh purchase of real estate identified as one forty-five Second Avenue Southeast. And two oh five Jefferson Southeast.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Mary to go into closed session to discuss purchase of real estate. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Say aye.